I guess I'll just lean over and advise Councilmember Taylor. I'll get to her unless that's Councilmember. Okay. We have, the first item that was on the agenda was Councilmember Taylor's governing for racial equity conference request. I'm just going to go ahead and set that over to regional issues on November 5th, which is when we'd usually hear and discuss something like that anyway. So that leaves one item on tonight's agenda, which is budget deliberations. I'm going to make a couple preparatory remarks regarding the budget deliberations. We have an ambitious budget schedule in presentations. We have tentatively scheduled a meeting for next Monday, the 29th of the committee of the whole. There's no regularly scheduled council meeting. At this point, we don't really anticipate that it's going to be necessary, but we wanted it there. And for the reason that the administration asked me to make sure that it's perfectly clear that we have as much time to do this as we want. And we can ask as many questions, we can take as long with the presentations, and not to feel that they're trying to rush anything through, which I don't think any of us felt. And then we can always schedule more meetings, so I just want to make sure that that's clear. And that's also then very much from my perspective as presiding officer of these meetings, is please ask the questions that you want to, make sure you get the information that you need. A little bit on that is kind of aside, and I guess sometimes it's been done in the past or not. If there's some suggestions from council on certain items they'd like to see funded or not funded, but a substantive change, potential change of the budget, those issues will be recorded and time for staff to respond to those inquiries. And then along the lines too is obviously if we take $10,000 from one thing and put it somewhere else, there's the ripple effect. And so going to our philosophy kind of that we've had this year is that no decisions are made basically at the same meeting. That's kind of with that in mind. So if we see some discussion and some ideas of where we'd like to see something more funded or that type of thing, we would kind of take that off and it would be readdressed. And so the administration, as well as Julia, will keep a list of the issues that we identify, if we identify. And if we have a bunch of them, we'd almost take a separate section of the meeting and talk about those kind of substantive changes and take it from there. With that, any questions from council before we begin on the process? Okay. Go ahead and turn it over to Ewan, and let's get the ball rolling.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. And for the benefit of the audience at home, I'm Ewan Wong, the city's administrative services administrator. And as usual, budget process is not just starting now. Actually, we started back in February with council workshop that we start setting some parameters and some considerations moving forward. So we received guidance from the council very early on this year. And then we came back in August and provided council with updates in terms of what our consideration at that time was in terms of budget cost reduction as well as revenue options. And then again, last Monday, the mayor delivered his budget message. And so tonight, we are actually going to start diving more into the details of departments' operations. And just so you know the schedule at this time, we are set, we set up for tonight. And primarily, we schedule for three departments, but depends on the timing and if we have sufficient time. Fire Department, Mark "Chief" Peterson is also ready, standing by, and if we have time, we'll probably put them on as well. And so based on the PowerPoint we have seen so far, I think it will be pretty systematic, and we can go through them pretty quickly. But definitely council can ask any question at any time. And also, any changes, we will definitely note it and follow up questions or response. We'll try to provide that as soon as we can, but at least by the next meeting, you will have the response from the previous meeting. So that's kind of the flow of the work, of the process. So tonight, we have at least three departments: community and economic development department and community services, and then property works. And without much ado, I will hand it to Chip Benson, our community and economic developments administrator.
Great. Thank you, Ewan. Thank you, Council President Swick, our members of the council, Chip Vincent from Community and Economic Development. Here for the first time, making a budget presentation for you this evening. And as Ewan said, let's get this going. So Community and Economic Development, here's an organizational chart for our department. We have 42 and 1/2 full-time equivalents within the department, and we're organized by three different divisions. First, beginning with Development Services, where we have the majority of our staff within the department, about 25 and 1/2 FTEs. The Development Services Division is overseen by our Development Services Director, Neil Watts. And Neil is, there's Neil, right back here. The Planning Division is, we have 12 FTEs in that group, and it's made up of current planning, long-range planning, technical services, and the Planning Commission. I should have mentioned in Development Services, three primary sections of that group are development engineering, the people who are working on the land or below the earth, the building inspection, the improvements above the ground, as well as code compliance. And then our final division we have within CED is headed up by our Economic Development Director, Ms. Suzanne Dale SD. And I, oh, there's Suzanne, right behind me here. And Economic Development Division is responsible for economic development, intergovernmental relations, the hotel motel advisory committee, as well as the municipal arts commission. We organize ourselves, those three divisions and the 42 and 1/2 staff around, mission statement for the department that tries to express all of what we work on collectively in all three divisions, and that is to enhance the vitality and livability of the Renton community by promoting prosperous economy and quality neighborhoods through economic development, sound urban planning, and streamline land use regulation. Our core services for CED include land use planning and permitting, regulation of development processes, economic development, citywide intergovernmental relations, Renton community marketing campaign, and the lodging tax advisory committee, as well as a lot of our time is spent providing staff support for both the Planning Commission as well as the Municipal Arts Commission. As you know, we've spent a lot of time in the city working on Renton results, and this is our budget, the top part, the graph here, the matrix, our budget organized by our different community service areas that we have in the city, beginning with safety and health, then livable community, representative government, mobility, utilities, environment, and internal support. And you saw initially how we organized our staffing levels based on those discrete divisions. This is another way of looking at it in terms of the different service areas that we have within the city. And it's, what's interesting is just to see of the six community service areas that we have here in the city, CED has some participation in five of the six. The only one where you'll see there's a void there is with mobility. So it really shows the fact that the work going on in community and economic development really touches a lot of the core service areas that we provide for in Renton results for the city. Also note, though, the budget for both 2013 and 2014 are provided here, about $6.2 million for 2013 and $6.4, a little more than that for 2014. The same 42 and 1/2 FTEs in both years, but you can see how that's allocated by community service area. The next thing I'd like to spend some time talking about is really the highlights. What's different here from what you've seen previously for the 2013 and 2014 budget? The key here for us in CED is that we're reducing our budget by three FTEs, bringing the total number of reductions since 2008 to a reduction in 23 FTEs, or 34% of the department since 2008. That's big. That's 23 positions that we've lost. The good news here is that those three FTEs that are being proposed to be eliminated as part of this budget are all vacant positions that we have in the department. The other good news here is it's one position in each division. So we're able to absorb that loss in each of the divisions either by providing support or cross-training along those divisions. So not one division is taking the hit there. Additionally, the farmers market program has moved to community services as part of this budget as well. And while I was talking about the fact that a reduction in 34% is a big deal, for the work that we do in community and economic development, is going back to that first page, 25 and 1/2 of our FTEs are in development services, dealing principally with permitting issues. And our permitting has dropped significantly as a consequence of the economy. So we have tried to maintain our level of service as high as we can while reducing staffing level to match what our real needs in terms of the volume of permit activities that we're getting. However, we've cut things down. We are, we're right on the edge. As the permit activity improves, we may have to look at some additional needs in the future in terms of restoring or re-establishing some of these needs. But right now, for 2013 and 2014, based on the permitting, level of permitting activity and the volumes that we're seeing, we think we are where we need to be. But I just always want to add that caveat, because one of the most challenging parts of CED is the permitting and processing that we do. We're a leading economic indicator for the economy. Everybody bases a lot of their business decisions on the permitting volumes that are coming through us. We really don't have that much to look out in front to gauge what we need to be establishing our staffing levels at. So that's always my qualifier here, is it's always difficult being a leading economic indicator of the economy.
Chip, if I may. Okay, so on that, in your 2013-2014 budget highlights, it says as the permit activity improves, there'll be need to restore some of these positions to maintain reasonable service levels. But then you also said you don't anticipate that happening in 2013-2014. So should that bullet be contained in 2013-2014, or is it just a reminder?
It's a reminder. It's a, based on everything I've said, this is a qualifying statement. This is based on the level of activity that we're seeing now and as we anticipate it to be, but we don't know. That could change. And it's, like I said, it's really hard to estimate what the volumes are going to be next year. So this is just a disclaimer, based on the information we have in front of us, we think this is the right budget.
And you'd said in the percentage decline, the 34% that you have there, how much the employee decline in the permitting?
The, boy, I would have to go back and look at those numbers.
And then you said business is down. How much is business down since 2008?
You know, and I'd have to go back and pull out those numbers as well. I don't have those numbers with me. There's not, if I can read into your question, there's not a one-to-one correlation between the reduction in permit volumes and the staffing reduction. We have tried to organize ourselves to be as efficient as possible. I'm going to speak to that in just a second.
I would, if you could get back at the reduction, the amount of the reduction in business, for lack of a better term, since that 2008 to '09 would be, that's just a number I'd like to see. Thank you. Randy?
Chip, while we're kind of on this topic, I presume you would watch how long it takes for permits to proceed through the system and let us know during the course of this two years, right, if it's, if we're falling behind, based on, it's hard to anticipate exactly what the economy's going to look like.
Yeah. And in fact, that's the point I was going to make in just a couple slides here. Actually, I lay out what our performance measures are for permitting.
Oh, perfect.
And we keep an eye on that, and if we start falling below, that's where we're going to have to talk about what can we do differently here, because those benchmarks for performance measures are really important to us in terms of providing a high-quality service to our customers.
Great. Let's proceed, certainly. Thanks.
Oh, it's the next slide. Okay. And again, this is interesting, because what we've done here for the six different community service areas that we have, based on Renton results, this shows performance measures for the department for private, those community service areas. And you can see, and I'll just, I'm not going to go through all of these, but I'm going to pick off the top one for each of the service areas. And the first one is one that we deal with a lot, and that is permit review for single-family applications completed within two weeks. That's 95% of the time. Down under livable community, the first one, is the city's annual sales tax revenue growth at a rate higher than King County, 1%. For representative government, accomplishment or significant progress made on each of the major priorities annually adopted in the state legislative agenda. For utilities, environment, infrastructure plan review is completed within three weeks. And then finally, internal support for property and technical services review, that those will be processed within two weeks. In all of five cases there, those are very high standards when compared to other jurisdictions in terms of performance measures. So that's something that we're going to want to keep an eye on. That's something that we're very close to being right on target today as we work through this. But again, a lot of these metrics for Renton results and our performance measures, we're just getting going on that just within the last year or so. So we really don't have a lot of good longitudinal data or metrics to evaluate this on, but this is something that we're keeping an eye on as we move forward. Some of the interesting statistics to go along with that is that, first is significant for us is that we have a little over 47,000 employees working within the city of Renton. The next bullet, to me, is significant, that the building permit value for permits issued up to date in September for 2012 is almost $150 million. That is a significant amount of private investment in improving through development our community here in Renton. When you look at that $150 million of improvements or assets going into the community, we have a total building permit issued of a little over 2,800 permits issued. This is all permits, including plumbing, mechanical, single-family building permits are also included here. What's not included in there is the total number of public works permits, that's for water and sewer, and that's a little over 1,000 permits. And I will stop there and answer a question.
Yes. Can you, the building permit value, is that over, what's the time period that that's over, or?
That's year to date.
Year to date?
Yeah. From January 1st through September.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
And then, it's always interesting to see how we're growing in single-family. To date for this year, we've issued 178 single-family building permits. And then the last note is always, one of the biggest challenges that we have in community and economic development, where I'm not sure we're ever going to have enough resources to meet the need that's out there, and that is dealing with code enforcement. We had 1,370 service requests for code compliance through this year. So a lot of requests for code compliance that we're dealing with in the city. We're organizing ourselves on really several major initiatives and goals within community and economic development, beginning with maximizing morale and efficiency. We've done a survey of our employees within CED. We're working closely with them to find out how can we do our business better, listening to them, to make it both a good place to work as well as get the maximum output of our employees. We're also looking at technology, looking at, doing a new permitting system through Intergov, where it allows our customers to go online and do as much of the planning and permitting as possible online. That obviously frees up our staff resources as well. Our goal is to have a customerless lobby. And when I say that, some people are taken back, but we want to be able to provide all the information and tools that people can have on our website so they can help themselves to make the process go even more efficiently for them, and we can use our staff resources more wisely.
Chip, can I send you back?
Sure.
You mentioned the code enforcement service requests, and I also see from the budget that we're eliminating a code enforcement position. How do you justify those two things?
Well, the way we justify that is, in fact, let me go to here. When we, when we talk about, in the first bullet, maximizing employee efficiency, one of the things that we have started working towards in community and economic development is looking at our three inspection units. We have building inspectors, we have development engineering inspectors, and we have code compliance inspectors. What these people all have in common is they're all working out in the field. So what we're trying to do is be able to cross-train these people so that if we only have a couple dozen building inspections on a day, that will free up some building inspectors to go over and help out with code compliance. Similarly, with development engineering inspectors, we want to be able to cross-train our staff and be nimble enough to put the resources where we have the need in the community. And part of this is driven by the fact of what I said originally, we're never going to have enough resources to be completely on top of all of our code compliance needs. But by cross-training our inspectors, by looking at what we're doing in a different way than we've done before, kind of, actually, I used to say we used to try to build bridges between the silos. We're now moving staff between the silos so that we can better meet our customer needs.
Go ahead, Terry.
I have a question on code compliance also. You know, I understand that the 1,300 or whatever, I mean, those are identified issues. How many of those are actually brought to some kind of completion? I mean, I, the only reason I say that is because in the last four or five months, I know at least 10 of these were mine, that I haven't seen anything, any results.
You know, and I'm sorry, I don't have the metrics for those, but that's something I'm looking at Neil, but we can provide those metrics back to the community.
Okay. Thank you.
Can I, since we're on code compliance, so you have a code compliance supervisor rate?
We have a lead for code compliance.
A lead, whatever. And then how many code compliance, then one more code compliance person or two?
Well, today, we have a lead, and then we have, we have one other person. We just had one of our code compliance officers. We originally had three, a lead and two other staff. Darryl Wilson, one of our code compliance inspectors, just resigned here in September and has accepted a job in Seattle. So we're actually down one right now that we plan on filling.
You're planning on filling it, or you're not?
We're planning on filling Darren's position, but we still have one more on top of that. So we have, there's three positions that we're planning on sustaining. Today, in last year's budget, there was four, and we're recommending eliminating one of the four.
And I guess, if somebody calls in a code compliance complaint, how soon will that be, will they get back to them, or?
They, you know, Neil, what's our, if I can ask Neil to come up, and Neil, our Development Services Director oversees our code compliance group, and if I can ask Neil to...
We typically respond back within 48 hours if the person who's making the complaint identifies who they are, leaves a phone number or an email that we can address it to. So at least let them know who it's assigned to, what the SR number is. One of the things that we'll be able to achieve with our new web-based software system is it'll make it easier for a concerned citizen to track what's actually going on. Many times, there are things going on, there's conversations going on with the property owner, there may be notices to correct, there may be negotiations going on that to somebody in the field, they may not be able to observe that there's actual actions taking place that would be, that are entered into our documentation. Somebody then can go online, look up that case, and see where they are. So that's, that's one thing we're hoping to achieve with the new system. I would say that the vast majority of those numbers that we gave you, we do get some, we do bring it into compliance. That isn't always necessarily what the person making the complaint may want to see, but it does come into compliance with our codes, and probably 90, 95% of the cases. We've come a long way. Another reason that we're able to be able to move from four to three is although the numbers are still there, if we were to go back and look at a lot of the major cases that we had five, 10 years ago, we really don't have those larger things going on. The Donna Lisa is gone, does not appear to be coming back. McGowan's, we have a lot of these that were major cases for us now that have not only been resolved, but in some cases have moved on to new development. So that, that's part of the reason we can reduce the workload a little bit.
I was going to say, I'm temporarily chairing while Rich stepped out, and I know Terry has a question.
Yeah, I just wanted to comment. When I have done code enforcement comic complaints, I do get immediately, you know, just something that says it's been logged in, it's just a computer reply. But that's typically all. So, you know, unless I see whatever it is that's been cleaned up, you know, I think the idea of your new software would be great, because I do realize that there's letters to owners that need to be done, and that there's a lot of steps along with that. The other thing is, perhaps that will also help, I see the same properties, you know, that had three-foot weeds, they get mowed down, and now it's nine months later and they're all back. I mean, does it take another complaint, or is it something that we can document and check on and make sure that they're under compliance?
It's one of the things that Chip and I've been discussing, putting together how we utilize some of the available time from the other work groups where their assignments may fluctuate over the course of the week, may have a bunch of inspections one day and less on the other, is to utilize those people to generate lists of cases, places that have had prior offenses, so once a month, we can check on those. My goal continues to be to a place where we're not only being proactive with the vast majority of our cases, but all of them, that we as the city hopefully can identify problems and not rely, have to wait until a neighbor finally gets fed up with it and calls us. So it's something we're hoping to do.
One more. I just, I hope that we're also utilizing other departments that are out and about as far as finding things, because I'm sure Public Works and the Police Department and many others that are out and about on the road can see things and report them, or are we utilizing?
We do both, and we would not be, you know, the success of our code enforcement in the city has a lot more to do with just the small group of people assigned to this. We get amazing support from both fire or from all three groups, from Public Works, police, and fire, that when I talk to other jurisdictions, just doesn't happen. We get amazing support, particularly from all three of those groups.
All right. One last item, because I've already complained to the mayor about this. Benson Hill is covered with graffiti, Talbot and Benson Road. It's on the fences, and it's on signs, all the realty signs, and it's been there for months. So whatever we can do to make that area look a little nicer would be.
Yes. The mayor passed those comments on to me. We will be assigning one of the, we have a building inspector who also worked in code enforcement in the past. We're going to pull him off of those for a little bit, cover it with some of our electrical inspectors, and we're going to assign him specifically on that one to go out and get a full inventory. Many of those cases, Carleen, who works in the police on the graffiti, and Donna have been working, but we just want to get a total survey of what we've got out there.
All right. Thank you very much.
Mr. Rich? Don't, I got a call. You're not off the hot seat, Daddy. I'm interested in this, you're saying the computer system where you'll be able to enter and the public can take a look at that. Now, I know that, is this the same one that Public Works was using so that?
Let's hope not. No, that's a different software system, their asset management system that's being used by Public Works and Community Services, is that what you're referring to? No, this is a different software system.
Okay.
Hopefully, we'll not have the same types of problems.
Yes. Neil, have, has there been some plan or strategy to mitigate the impact as we go with the code enforcement staff reduction for populations that don't have access to a computer or have language barriers? And currently, what are we doing for those individuals that may have code compliance issues in their neighborhood? And how do they monitor any type of progress that may be taken, taking place? Is there anything happening there?
I don't have a good answer for that one. I mean, there's always going to be people that are going to have difficulties having access to computers, and as you go to that type of system, that is something that you need to be aware of. I'm not proposing that we do away with the front counter. I don't think, Chip points that out as a goal, that we want to have, be able to have people have access online, but we're not talking about closing the counter down so people can still come in and work face-to-face with people. We have a good listing of people within the city who know different languages. We have a couple people within community and economic development that speak Spanish, and so we, you know, many of the people that have concerns are more fluent in Spanish, so we try to work with them in a language they're comfortable with. But other than, sometimes you just can't replace that just one-on-one type of work and go in the extra step through customer service. I don't know that technology necessarily replaces just good face-to-face customer service.
I understand that. My concern is that, you know, being that there is a, there is a... My, my concern is that, you know, being that there is a, there is a requirement for many of our immigrant refugee populations to understand how to navigate within city government policies and how we do business, that there could be a further hindrance in their ability to be able to understand how this process works if they don't have some form. And it could be, I don't know if you've got someone who could speak to someone over a phone and there's a language line that can accommodate those individuals that are non-English speaking, or if there's some kind of an idea to prepare for that, that population of individuals within our city.
Yeah, I'd have to honestly say we don't really have a direct answer to those or a direct response to that, both on the code enforcement or building inspections or building questions.
But if I can add to that, theoretically, based on our ability to be able to have the public who have access to computers, who can use computers to do a lot of the planning and permitting work online, that actually frees up more resources to help meet the needs of people who are challenged otherwise. So, moving on to additional initiatives and goals, we also have a number of different issues related to business recruitment, retention and expansion, catalyzing major development sites, the obvious rapid growth that's going on in the aerospace sector. We are, as an example, meeting monthly with Boeing representatives on the, what we call the rate readiness and the expansion going on there. Also, we're looking at major development sites, both downtown and in Sunset and Lake Washington and Port Windell, areas where there's significant amount of planning work that's going on within those communities right now. And not to be lost in all of this at all is the ongoing community planning work, both in city center community plan as well as with soon to be draft Benson Hill community plans. And then the ongoing intergovernmental work. A lot of what we do within CED works on, depends on working with other governmental entities, and there's a lot of ongoing intergovernmental work that's being done. No budget presentation would be complete without talking about fee increases. We don't have a lot of.
Can you go, can you go back to that last slide? And I get, when it says intergovernmental and then you have defense in quotes, who are you defending against?
I was wondering too.
Good evening, Councilmember Suzanne Dale, SD Economic Development Director, and I also help manage our government relations. I put it in quotes because I didn't want you to think we were in the defense industry, but that we're playing defense against other levels of government, primarily the state as we look out for unfunded mandates and, you know, simply bad bills that might hinder our ability to be an autonomous effective government. And then funding cuts from both the state and federal levels as well as the regional level, certainly an area where we are watching out. But I left citywide funding in with the goal that we're continuing to play offense and looking for funding for infrastructure projects, community services work and otherwise.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, so not a lot of fee increases here for us. Both the first two, both the demolition permit fee and the landscape review fee, these are simply fees to reflect our actual costs at performing that work. The three fees below that, both the fire parks and transportation impact fees, that's already been adopted by the council previously, but simply wanted to recognize that that is part of our fee package, and there are no increases in those impact fees for 2013. However, in 2014, it'll be the first year of the phase in, of the multi-year phase in for the impact fees for transportation, parks and fire. I'm, I'm sorry.
And I, and I think I need to point out, if I'm correct, that those fees don't help your department as when we're talking about the impact fees.
That's absolutely.
That all goes someplace else, so that, this money is just something that you are the bill collector on.
That's, that's absolutely the case. All of, it's simply, these are fees that we collect, so, and, you know, for full disclosure, we want to make sure that everybody understands that these fees are part of the schedule, but these go, these fees go directly for capital improvements for fires, for parks and for transportation. So we're just the, the clearinghouse of the fee that go to one of those three for capital improvements.
And, and the master builders did have their representative in here and thought they were an appropriate fee increase, I just want to pass that on.
And, Mr. Chair? Yeah, and Chip, I guess we're going from not having a landscape plan review fee to a $110 fee, is that correct?
Yeah.
And just in case anybody looks at that and wonders, that's for landscape that's required by a development plan, right? And it's really our reviewers making sure that it complies with the needs of the development.
Exactly, that's exactly.
So if somebody at their house wants to plant a tree or something, they wouldn't need this, but.
No, no. Thank you for making that distinction. That's in fact exactly the case.
Right.
And, and that's, if I'm building a new house and I put my landscaping in as a private resident, it doesn't affect me either?
Doesn't. This is for, as, as Councilmember Corman said, this is for development applications.
It says somebody's building commercially and we require so much landscape buffer or landscaping in the parking lots or something, this review's a, yeah, okay.
Typically, the way we deal is a subdivision, you know, just making sure the frontage improvements are adequately, you know, planned for and accommodated.
Right.
Consistent with our code.
Good.
Okay, so this is, service sustainability is obviously what the reductions we're facing that we've had to date and maintaining our very high performance standards and expectations for service delivery, our service sustainability is really important to us. So maintaining the staffing capacities and challenges while activity increases is going to be one of those things that we're going to have to work really hard on. As we've discussed, creating, I don't even want to say that it would be wonderful if we could have a seamless process for the transition from our old computer permitting system to our new. I have yet to see one of those in my career, but I'm hopeful that we're going to be the first ones to actually have that. You know, the, both the points that Suzanne and Neil made are absolutely dead on, and that is, you know, the kind of inter, intra-departmental teamwork that we do in CED. As the community service areas point out, we touch a lot of different community service areas within the city, and we need to be able to work beyond our department boundaries on the sixth floor to work with everybody to be successful for the city. Our community planning choices and needs as we begin to mature that community planning program and how that develops under our budget, as well as the city intergovernmental funding for infrastructure and community needs. That's one of the biggest challenges that we're facing is just how do we adequately finance infrastructure as new development occurs? So that's one of our principal challenges, that we look for new tools and new ways to ensure that we're not reducing the level of service for infrastructure or, or service needs for our community as new development comes into the city. So with that, that's a nice picture of our CED team there at our last quarterly staff meeting here in, you might recognize the location here in the council chambers. With that, I'd like to try and answer any other questions you might have.
Questions from Council Don.
Yes, I don't know if you have your budget book there, but on page 339, at the top of the page under CIP, for 2012, I, I looked, I got my years mixed up, but anyway, you had $1.7 million in capital improvement programs.
Wait, I'm going to have, Ewan, do you want to?
So this is 2012, I think primarily is the Sunset area and some other subarea of planning efforts.
Okay.
Okay, that's, okay, that makes sense. And then, this is going to go through pretty well every budget, I'm sure, as we go through it tonight, is in other services and charges, you have a $600,000 budget, and I realize that's a whole variety of, of different charges, and I'd like to know what they are, you know, how much of that is for training and travel and how much is for the other things? And I, and maybe if it's somewhere else in the budget book, I apologize, but I, I did a quick look through and I didn't see.
I think you're correct. I don't think we provide a detailed line item breakdowns, but we can provide the breakdown of the other services.
Yeah, Ewan, if you could provide all of us, and each, not just this presentation, but for all of them. Yep, thank you.
Just to clarify, if I could, that's, do you want line item detail for all budgets?
You might as well, because I can ask the same question on every budget.
You want that hard copy or electronic? It's, that'll be, I don't know, it's 500, 600 pages probably.
Well, I, I'm just talking to other services and charges.
Well, that's, I just, that's why I was clarifying. I asked if you wanted line item detail for all.
Oh, no, no, I thought you were talking about for other.
Just, just services and charges, okay.
Just services and charges.
Yeah, each, each department, but that specific line item, just flesh that out a little bit more.
Okay, thanks.
Don, anything else?
I'll, I'll quit there.
Any other questions from council? Thank you, Chip.
Thank you.
I see Terry Higashiama approaching, I think there must be community services time then.
Good evening, Terry Higashiama, Community Services Administrator. I'm here to go over the budget for community services, Council President Swickor, council members. I've tried to cover this in a higher level, knowing that you have a lot of detail within the budget book yourself, and I did put the reference to the pages on the particular slides so you would know what page we were working off of, if that does help. And certainly, any questions, we'll try to make sure we get those answers to you. And so, because I get to work with one of the top teams in the city, they're all here to back me up, so Leslie Batlock, who is our Parks, Planning and Natural Resources, Peter Renner from Facilities is, is also here, Kelly Beamer is on vacation this week, so we'll let her offer tonight, and then we also have Karen Burgsvik from Human Services, Tim Williams from Recreation, Lou Stewart from the Museum, and Bonnie Raresich from Neighborhoods, Resources and Events, and I think Dennis Conte was covering with us tonight also. Did I miss any, and Terry Flatley is also here. So they're all here to back me up. So, starting out with community services, first of all, let me thank the administrative team. I will tell you that none of us could get our budget done without the work that Ewan and her great finance team does for us. So we run to the fifth floor quite often, or they're running to our floor, helping us as we're moving numbers around and making sure that everything matches. So I just want to make sure that I, I give them the kudos, because I think we're very fortunate in this city to have a finance administrative department that, that really fine-tunes our budget and helps us all do our job better. In 2012, we were at 94.5 positions within community services. In 2013, we will be at 90.50, and by '14, we'll be at 90.25. And as I go through and explain those changes, you'll understand where we've moved things around and how our department will be working more efficiently. This is just a very, very light touch on all of the things we take care of, and I think you know, you guys are out visiting a lot of the activities and the events, so we tried to pick just some high numbers here. Taking care of our resources is valuable and very important. We are the stewards, I remind people quite often that we don't own anything, the public owns everything we get to take care of or manage, and we try to be the best stewards of it that we can. Obviously, all of the assets that are in the city are important, and they've been here for a long time, and we want to make sure they continue that. So as we go through the budget, we talk about the quality of that, you'll see where some of the things we'll have to look at our level of service and how we're doing that. But I'm very proud of the work that gets done within the team. Like Chip, we are in five of the six operating programs within the rent results. We are spread out, we're seven divisions, and so we're very different seven divisions, but we work quite well as a team, and we certainly rely on the interdepartmental connection with the other departments. As we were talking about code enforcement, that is one that we connect with quite heavily also between our volunteer program, because quite often, sometimes people will have code issues but can't take care of them. So often, we can, through the work that's done there, we can get people in to help people actually take care of those code issues. So I think that helps get people on a positive note, and then we make that, I think, a really quality look in the community as we work together on that. So the, the way that departments work together is really important. So we're broken out within this, but I think the biggest, as we look at rent results for community services, it's really how we're interacting with community. Are we out there and are we connecting and are we really doing the job that they're asking us to do in the best way possible? So when we go to that, we really talk about taking measurement. We have been working for the last six years, when I came on, which happens to be seven years in April, on best business practices. We realize that we are a choice that people make, we are not a mandated service, we are where people choose to put their dollars, and if we aren't doing the best practices, then we aren't representing the public and doing the best job we can. The other thing we have to be thinking about all the time is what will the new trends be? What will people be expecting? How are we going to make that happen in the same land that we have? How do we make fields fit for different sports? How do we make sure that a skate park can be used for multiple things? So we've got to be always being innovative and then looking at how we find dollars, grant dollars and that to make it work. We've really been trying to adapt to make sure that we're recognizing how our community's changing. As Councilmember Taylor was saying, we have to make sure that we have places for rugby and lacrosse and then all the other things that our new, new members of our community bring to our, to our city. And we've got to find places for everybody to fit and find their places to recreate. We know some people like passive places, others want more active, and we've got to make sure we can do that. And then we look at our organizational review. Even with seven divisions, although we do very different things, we have to figure out how we do it better and we use each other's skills, and we have some of the most talented staff in this city I have ever seen. And what I really see is that people want to grow, they want to be better, they want to do more, and they have great ideas. So we've got to continue to look at how we're set up organizationally, and the way we were years ago may not work for today. A good example of that is when we had custodians working at night and some during the day, very separated, trying to be out covering everything, and we switched that in the last budget cycle, and so we start earlier, but all the teams work together. We do it in twos, so we need less vehicles, they work together, they do, they actually cover more square footage, but we found that it's a better team approach, and we're making better use of the resources, we're running less lights at night, less heat, and so we're saving on utilities at the same time. So we've got to always be thinking about that as we're going forward. The big one for us, healthy workforce. I hate to tell you, but we are an aging workforce, and that is one of the things when you have budget cuts, you don't hire as many new young people coming in, that's just a fact. And so we have to make sure that we are looking at the equipment that our employees are using, how they're lifting, we work with our HR risk management to make sure that we're doing stretching, that our employees are getting the benefits of working in the best environment they can, because when we have a healthy workforce, we get more done, again, the public benefits from that, and we see less injuries, and we're learning more about how to do better business in, in approaching that. We have to stay connected to the public, this is a big factor for community services. We do a lot of surveys and evaluations, and that's why when you see our performance measurements, we have three pages of them, because we have to make sure the public is telling us what they want us to do and how they want their resources used. It's not our choice what classes go on or how we design a park or where we build a trail, that's all about public meetings and connecting with the public and having them tell us what they want it to be, what they want the assets to be. It's prioritizing the level of service. While we've had to compromise on that a bit, we've certainly put safety first, and we've certainly put the high-use areas as the most important. It's hard to believe that Kulan will be 40, 40 years old this, in 2013, we'll have to do a celebration. And so, like all of us, we get a little older, we, we have some things we have to look at to repair, and that's part of our job, is making sure we're looking at that. And then we need to make sure that, again, we are putting the valuable resources in the most desired areas to make sure that they connect for community as where they're attending and where they're going to use. Not all of ours are paid programs, so we need to make sure we evaluate when people use the trail or the place. use the trail or the places where they drop in and have their own quiet time, that we're connecting them through our surveys also. One of the things I think all of us are most proud of, and we thank you for your support on that, is that we were re-accredited this last year. The importance of that is of being only one of two in Washington, and one of less than 100 in the whole United States, to make sure that we met 140 standards, and says that to the public, that we can say we are doing the very best business we can, and we've been, we've met the national standards for that. While we hate to sometimes spend our time doing that, it really forces you every five years to make sure that you're going back and doing that self-analysis. Sometimes we get so busy trying to survive day-to-day, we forget to stop and say, are we doing it the best way we can? And when you go through an accreditation process, while sometimes it's painful, and sometimes it's hard to realize that we aren't doing the best, it forces you to go back and look at that. The Recreation Division has taken on the cost modeling. This has been very helpful to make sure that every recreation program we do, in a tiered effect, is now being measured by how much it costs to put on, what is the benefit to the community, where are our sponsors and grants, and are we making a profit as to where it fits into the tiers? We will be coming back to you with a presentation on how we've done on the first year of doing that, why we've had to let some programs go, because we, they did not fit the model. Others have benefited from that, and it's easy when we have someone come in that wants to put a program on, that we can say, what is your minimum, what is your maximum? We have a standard to work with every instructor or contractor that comes in, and I think that's the benefit to everybody. And it really allows us then to look, when we're going out for sponsors or for donations, that people see that we're doing the best we can to put on any event that we have here in the city. The Parks, Recreation, Natural Resources and Areas Plan, I'm, I think it's one of the best, that's why it won the Governor's Award. I can take no credit for that, other than to say Leslie and Vanessa were, were just the best putting that plan together. It's certainly being used as a model for a lot of other cities, and we get a lot of requests for it. What I think I'm most proud of, though, is that it's about the public. It's about the public that's told us, this is what we want to see done, and I will tell you that we hear it over, and the number-one thing is, take care of what you have. And that's what we're focused on. The 10 plans in the back that really tell us about where we need to move forward, it is a guide from the public and from you, when you adopted it, to say, this is where we think Renton should move forward, and this is what we want you to focus on. And so we have a plan to make sure we're staying connected with our community, again, making us the best stewards we can. Certifications are really important. While we've had to take significant cuts in our training budgets, we have maintained enough funds to do the certifications that are very important, to make sure our team stays at the highest quality professional level that we can, whether that's pruning, or whether that's taking, making sure we can do our playground safety certification, our safety inspectors, tree safety, pest management spraying, our home repairs, working with all of those things. We've got to make sure our employees are in the best place that they can be. We owe that to them, that when we're asking them to do good jobs, that we allow, and we have the money to get them the certifications they need. It also protects us in our risk management, to make sure we're doing the best business we can. I'll lump these together with grants, scholarship, partnerships, donations, and volunteerism, because it is one package for us in community services, and all seven divisions rely on this heavenly. This is about stretching dollars as far as we can. This is about making each dollar into many more things than it does by itself. It's about building relationships. It's about giving to those in need. People who work and live in Renton feel connected to their resources and take pride in their community if they have a place to give back. I truly believe that we have less vandalism and less problems, because people take ownership of the parks and the places they visit, the buildings that they're in. And when they get to volunteer, and they feel like that's part of their yard or part of their space, then they feel connected, and they feel like their city's working for them. The grants and scholarships that make a difference for us going forward, whether it's buying land, or kids that get to play basketball, or seniors that get to take a computer class, all work because we continue to push that envelope. You've heard about all the things we do, you're always there for the neighborhood programs, the Arbor Day, Earth Day, the, the Dog Park, IKEA Renton River Days, our Day of Caring, the, all the boards and commission members that spend multiple hours with us, the farmer's market, the senior center, Thanksgiving at the senior center, our Special Olympics. Not one of those could function without the volunteers and the donations and the things that come forward from our community. So when we look at our budget, while we've had to take significant cuts, we are able to manage, because more people just keep stepping up to help us, and that's a huge difference continuing. So, these are just a few of the things we measure in community services. As I said, there are actually three pages of things we're measuring, but I think it's really important, not only of who's coming in the door, it's how their customer service experience is, what the condition is of the things, and do they feel safe in when they're visiting our facilities? So those are all in your budget book. Question, was there a question? So let's talk about the changes for 2013 and '14. First of all, we were able to keep two repair technicians in, in our human services, because we had CDBG funds, Community Development Block Grant Funds, that were carried forward into 2012. We're losing those funds. Those are always volatile. We never know what the federal government will do, so we move up and down, depending on where those funds come from. So we will actually go, lose one of those positions, so we will have two that will work in the home repair part of it. We have one secretary position that was part of human services, and she left and got a job somewhere else, so we chose not to fill that position, again, to meet our need for cutting our dollar amount. So, human services will actually go from six to four employees. Again, I give credit to the rest administrative staff, the other three secretary twos, and Sandy Pilot, who is the administrative assistant, they are picking up all the workload in human services. And people have been very patient, although I will tell you, with this massive rain after this dry spell, it's been very busy with gutters and windows and leaks this week. So we're getting to those as fast as we can. In the museum, we're seeking as many grants. Liz Stewart is amazing, she's very involved in Fore Culture. We're trying to get the lobby area changed. If, if you haven't been in the museum and seen all of the changes that are going on there, especially in all of the exhibits, it used to be that you could go out here and see the same thing, but boy, Liz and her crew over there are really changing things through. So we're trying to get a grant through Fore Culture to change the lobby entrance, and they're working really hard to build their membership. She recently has been very successful working with Renton High School, bringing them in and connecting with high school students, so that we're building that relationship, so we'll always have a place to connect with our community. In Recreation, we're going to be changing, the Recreation Supervisor went to a .80 a few years back, again, as a budget cut, but as we've cut positions, we need to move that position back up, so we did cut some part-time dollars in order to make that Recreation Supervisor a whole. In the mayor's speech, you heard about Public Access, that's looking at operating Carco Theater. We've been working really hard, and I want to give VJ and the Recreation Staff a lot of credit. The biggest change probably for Carco is the fact that we used to get substantial rentals from businesses that did a lot of training, a lot of work and seminars at, at Carco Theater, because it was a perfect size. Well, with webinars and all of the ways that we do training different, that's been a huge difference for us, and we don't get the daytime rentals that we had there. And so it's just a change also, as we see in cycles that go. We still do a lot of community work in that building, and with Public Access, we'll continue to do those. As you know, we, we cut the teen musical, but we've been very fortunate that the theater, Civic Theater, could pick that up. So we have a lot of things that are moving around, but this means that that position will go away. We've kept it on until April 1st. We are working with HR, because as those positions are union, it could be the possibility of bumping that occurs, and so that turns over to our HR department to see where, which Recreation Coordinator would eventually lose that, their position. It'd be a three-quarters cut in 2013, and then a full cut in 2014. So we're still in the process, that still needs to come back to you, to see if that will work. If it doesn't work, then we'll have to look at other ways that we'll make cuts within the department. We also, Teresa Nishi, who has been with us 13 years in the city, and has worked at both Highlands and North Highlands, she's actually going to be moving down to City Hall, so you won't see this in a budget action. We realize in Bonnie's area, which is Neighborhoods, Resources and Events, which moves us right into there, we are very fortunate, the Neighborhood Program and the Farmer's Market moved over to community services in this division. So Teresa Nishi and a chance to grow and gain more knowledge, will actually be moving into City Hall, and she'll be working in that department, learning about the Farmer's Market from Valeria. She has no backup at this time, so if she gets sick, we're a little short on that, so she's going to learn the Farmer's Market. She's also going to learn all about the Special Events Committee, which Bonnie has been managing. So again, this is part of the succession plan, to make sure we have people, and we don't have a funnel where one person has the knowledge, and when they're gone, we don't have another person to take care of that. And then she'll also work with the Neighborhood Program. With the close, the, going from six to four, and Human Services, Diane Utteck, who did have the summer lunch program, will not be able to manage that, because obviously, more goes on her plate as we, we streamline. And so Teresa Nishi will, who had worked with Diane Utteck, will take over the summer lunch program and work it through that division. So we're doing a lot of shifting around, again, to make sure we can provide those services, but, and then give people a chance to grow and expand, and, and move them around a little bit. So Tom Pudoff, then, will take both Highlands and North Highlands together. He'll also work with the new Early Childhood Learning Center with the Renton School District, along with his teen youth group that he manages, and then he will help with the accessible playground, which will be right behind the building, and will bring community together and the Renton Housing Authority, so he will actually take all of the Highlands together with Recreation Staff. We haven't divided everybody down yet as to what supervisor, excuse you, till, until we know we're VJ and that will move around, so we're still in a little flux there. So that will move everybody around a little bit, change it, but we'll be, still be able to provide without ma, with making minimum cuts within our department. The minimum wage, we have cut almost 25% of our seasonal, part-time, intermittent positions, as you know, as we close buildings and cut other positions. The minimum wage next year will go to $9.13, which is, which is wonderful, what our state looks at people making a livable wage. What's difficult for us in community services is the fact that we have not increased our line item in part-time since 2009. So as you raise that dollar amount up for, per hour, we get less workable hours into our, our community, and we have to figure out how to best use our part-time and seasonal. That's just a fact where we have to go, as we watch our budget, just like everybody else, but we hire, you know, about 200 seasonal, part-time, and we want to make sure that we're meeting that need. And the training is important, all the way down from our lifeguards to our summer facility staff and the others that work for us. So watching that minimum wage, we have to figure out how we best use that with our full-time staff. And that's, you know, just to get another way of looking for better business practices. So, as we go forward from there, the changes in the parks, again, we have not done a utilities rate increase within our line items since 2009. We've been able to cover that by other savings, but we're, that's catching up with us, as Puget Sound Energy and other utilities, water continues to grow. So we have added, and I want to appreciate the, the help on this of getting utility adjustments. That's your irrigation, your water, and all the lighting, everything else we take care of.
Terry?
Yes.
Hi, Terry. Well, I'm, I'm wondering now, as you said that, one of my questions had to do with under Park Planning and Natural Resources, was the interfund payment, and in 2012, it was at $24,000, and your proposed is $82,000. So I don't know if that has anything to do with your utility rates, or not?
Yes, it does.
Okay.
Because the Parks and Golf Director, Kelly Beamer, oversees the maintenance, and while we have many areas that we contract maintain, the irrigation is maintained by city staff. We did try contract maintaining the irrigation, it was unsuccessful, and it's just better, it's more efficient and effective for city staff, and so we're transferring those dollars over to Parks and Golf.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Leslie. So we're, and we're also looking at the boat launch operations, we're, we're really looking at the equipment we have down there. I think we can do better, and that, trying to find good equipment for that is, has been difficult, so we're working on that. That might help us with our revenues. At the golf course, we're patiently awaiting 2015, when our bond is finally paid off. That's a little bit of struggle for us. That'll mean about $400,000 that will free up. I remind people that the public doesn't pay for the golf course, that's an enterprise fund, so all the expenses and anything that goes on there is by the fees that are raised and the revenue that is made, generated from the, the restaurant or the golf itself. So we'll do, we're doing minimal CIP improvements, as you see that, as we get through, and then hopefully by 2015, we can do some of the, the larger that we want to, especially in the driving range. We want to get some improvements done there. Parks Planning and Natural Resources, we've got some inspections that have to be done. We're continuing to work on all of our tree work, and making sure that we're keeping data on that. We're trying to update, add some tree inspection software that will help us keep track of where we are. We're certainly working on the accessible playground, as you know, from that, so we're trying to put that together. And the team is, is three people working in a lot of different directions, and we just keep sending Leslie out to find more grants, and hoping that we get them, and we try to match those the best we can, again, trying to make our dollars work. Facilities is taking a pretty hefty cut in their major maintenance, it's $138,000. I'm not sure if it's sustainable, but we've got to make it balance, and this is just taking care of carpets, painting, and a lot of this, the major maintenance that is just about taking care of our buildings. We are hoping to move the city attorney over to City Hall, you'll see that there's a budget in there for that, and we're trying to get the final estimates for that tenant improvements. They also are receiving a utilities rate increase of $87,000 in 2013 and $110,000 in 2014. We pay for all of the fire stations, all the electrical, except for streetlights, and that's covered in Public Works, as Greg Zimmerman will tell you. So everything else is paid through facilities, and it's a pretty hefty bill when it comes through for all the buildings we take care of and manage, although we've done a lot of energy saving and working on that. We continue to look at where we can change things, and we've used grants as much as possible. So that's helped us a lot. In the CIP, and I've given you the pages there, so I'm just going to cover this at a high level. We put up on your, the council chambers last, this week, the Coulon Report, that gave you a very detailed report of everything, about a $1.2 million work that needs to be done within Coulon itself, everything from just board replacement, to also, all the way down to underwater work that needs to be done. So we've prioritized it, we've moved some dollars around, we're trying to get to the major safety issues, which is the log boom and replacing the concrete that's out in front of the concrete pavers, that are out in front of Ivors Kidd Valley, obviously the high step use, and if you've walked there, you know, we've tried to adjust those as much we can, we've got to pull that up and redo it. The log boom, obviously, is a major one. We prioritized it down to, and you should have gotten a memo previously, earlier, that gave you a list of which ones we can do internally, and which ones we'll have to prioritize and do externally, without going through the, that process. We have to stay on top of that. Again, the park is 40 years old, and we want to make sure that we have that taken care of. We do have the detailed report that we sent you, that gives you every single thing that we had.
I have a copy of it here.
Yes, and it's also online for you, too. It's very detailed, but for, in order for us to make sure that we're looking at everything, we need to have that kind of report done, to make sure we, we're taking care of our assets the best we can. In facilities, we've got quite a few projects that are really about maintaining and taking care of our assets, as we've said, it's prioritizing. We're trying to finish up fixing the two shops over by the senior center, working there. We continue to try to make sure that the, the fire stations are well taken care of. Riffs are a big work for us. We'll work with Public Access to make sure they do the work they need to do inside of Carco Theater as we go forward from there. And then we continue to make sure that we have the safety and, and the lighting and the energy savings that we can do going forward from there. Again, as you go, look through the detail within the, the budget book itself and the explanations, if you have a particular project you want to know more about, please ask us, and we'll get back to you on that. Yes?
The, the numbers that you have, it says refer, reference 5-7 and 5-38, is that?
Under the capital part of the budget book?
Yeah. So if I look at the CIP program, and I go to page 538, it talks about the Sunset EIS Park, and, and not the Coulon.
Yeah.
I guess I'm, I'm confused.
Okay, I'm going to make sure. Okay, I'm going to make sure I have the pages right. Thank you for your patience.
I may not be looking in the right place.
So 5.7, five dash seven starts the, Stuart says Parks Coulon, 5.7 to five dash, it starts on 5.7?
Well, 5.27?
5.7.
5.7.
And I must be, mine must not be reading my book right, because if I look at my, 5.7, it says general government.
Yes, and that's where we are.
Okay.
We're under general government. So if you go to the next page, which is 5.8, you're going to see a summary of all the CIP.
Okay.
Okay, and then the next pages are a page by page breakout of each one of those projects.
Okay. I was just trying to follow the, the numbers, Negan. I now understand it. Thank you.
You're welcome. Lease properties, as you know, we leased the Liberty Park building out and that's going very well. We are only a little over 25% full and 200 mil, and that's concerning. We need to get that building full. It's certainly a sign of the market. At one time, we were full, so we're working on that very hard, trying to get the interior of the building looking a little nicer so we, we can draw tenants in. We are working with Kenny. He now has the, his long-term lease at Rain City Catering in the event center, and so that now is progressing. So we didn't see as much rental this year because it's a year in advance booking, but I'm feeling that as we're talking with, meeting and meeting with him regularly, that we're on a track to really make that go forward and make that a higher use building. So certainly the Oktoberfest this last few, this week has really made the, I think, a niche and a lot of people came in and saw what a great facility that is. And as we make improvements in the Piazza area and the farmer's market, I think you'll continue to see the event center even use more. So we've got to stay on top of our, our leased facilities to make sure we're filling them and we're getting the tenants through the building as much as possible. Again, I talked about the golf course to just make sure that we're doing what we can to make, to keep our rounds up, to, to get people in playing golf, which they still are, and we're still one of the busiest golf courses in the area. I think it's an testament to the team that they do such a great job of keeping that course high quality. And we still are Audubon certified, which makes this one of the greenest golf courses around, which I think is a good environmental statement for us going forward. So our fee increases, we did, excuse me, we did a lot of fee increases in 11 and 12, and so we have fewer increases going into this year. The biggest ones are actually going forward, let me get my right pitch here, is the group rate at the pool, raising that up. You'll see current resident and then you'll see current proposed. It's a $2 rate increase from there. The fitness pass, it's one I wanted to talk to you a little bit about. We're actually going down. We are having to evaluate really our business in the fitness room at the community center. Certainly when the community center was built, we didn't have LA Fitness. We didn't have 24-hour fitness. We didn't have the competition that's in the market and we certainly don't have the sustainability to keep the type of equipment that these type of organizations or these businesses have in their weight rooms. So it's a little bit difficult for us to compete. We also don't have the operating hours that they have. So our numbers are significantly down in the weight room at the community center, which affects our revenue. So I think we have to look at that going forward. Is, is that a service now that's being provided by others in the community? Is it a business we should continue to stay in? And what is it the cost that we can really afford to keep the type of equipment and the competition that's going on within the community going? So we, we're evaluating that currently as we go forward. So that's why you see the monthly pass go down for the weight room at the community center. And then we're proposing an increase in swim lessons in 2014. All of the fees are in the back of your book. We have substantial numbers of fees we, we charge. We always check to make sure we're in the market value of what we're, we're charging. We don't have synthetic field turf fields, and so that does hurt us on some of our rental fees that we can charge for some of our ball fields. And certainly at Ron Regis Park, that does affect us not having synthetic turf. So we're hoping we can move there soon. The golf course fee increases, you'll see the current and proposed. Right now, for example, our weekday weekend is $22 and 18 holes for the weekday is 31. We're proposing going to 18 for weekend and 18 is a current, is 22. And then our proposed is about a $2, $1 increase for going into 2013 and 14. Again, we try to do a comparison with the other golf courses around and we're riding there in the market, so I think that keeps people coming. Also our visibility of where we're located, I think is very important. Finally, sustainability. That really is what we're trying to do best within our budget, and that's the challenge we have, whether it's in our human services, making sure we can get those grant dollars out the door to as many agents as we can. But it takes all of these things coming together. And first and foremost, I would tell you that what it takes is quality staff, because you can have the best procedures, but if you don't have good customer service and you aren't able to answer the needs and meet the people, then you're not going to move forward and sell for sustainability. We've got to make sure we're good using our best customer service and our staff stays at the best they can, which amazingly, they just do an excellent job. A teamwork approach, that's both external and internal, as we talked about, all of our partners. A good example of that is the tree replacement on Third Avenue where it's Public Works, it's Parks, it's Terry Flatley doing the design, it's everybody coming together, it's the businesses. But we can't do these projects if we don't have a teamwork approach and everybody brings their resources together. We're getting so much more of our dollars. If you were to look back six, 10 years, we were so siloed in our departments and I think that hindered us from doing the best service we can from the public. And that has certainly changed. I really credit Jay and the mayor for pushing us to make sure that we're finding those combinations, to make sure we're getting the most out of the dollars. That would certainly be an example in our emergency management. We've got to take care of what we have. As I told you, that was the number one thing from our pro plan, that the public said, don't add a bunch of new things, just take care of what you had. And that's replacing playground equipment and making sure the surfaces and the picnic tables, things are clean. We continue to battle vandalism. I haven't found the, the golden nugget for that one, and if you have it, we'd love to know what that is, but that still continues to cost us dollars, but it's certainly less than it was. Having a day of service where you have 11 providers, 36 community projects, that's about taking care of what we manage and making sure people come together. The Cleveland and Edland property, where we work with Renton Housing Authority so we can keep those, those buildings where people are living in them, but it keeps the property managed. And our contractors that help us do the best job we can, along with our employees. And then I think a big ticket item that we all recognize is protecting the environment. Very few cities have, the wetlands we do have a river that comes down through it, has a lakefront, has all of the assets that we have, so we've got to protect it. And when you have all of the agencies that we work with to do every single project, it means that you're trying to protect the environment in the best way we can, but sometimes it is a tough job and sustainability to get those projects done, take a long time.
All the helper agencies.
They are, and they all have the best in tandem, we know that. But when you're working five or six agencies just to fix the gabions on the Cedar River, it's sometimes you wonder if you're going to get there. So we'll keep at it. That, when you figure we have 132,000, 270 street, park and natural tree areas to take care of, that's not an easy job with one forester on board. But when we work it as a team, then those are the kind of environmental things we've got to do. And we've got to continue to look for better funding for us for both capital, major maintenance and general operations, because with REIT being the challenge that it is, we know that we have to prioritize our capital projects. We've got to make sure that safety stays and that we're not spending more money as time goes on by not taking care of something today. And we have to work with our community to say, what is the best way to take care of what we have with the resources they're willing to pay for going forward. So that's, uh, community services, that's our team. I'm very, very fortunate that I get to work with the best group around, and I, I know every administrator will say that, but I truly believe that this is an amazing group and we cover every nook and cranny in the city. Thank you.
Questions from council?
Yes, I got to find my page again here.
Okay.
I thought I had it marked. Anyway, just a comment on the park ranger program.
Yes, I didn't even mention that. Yes, thank you.
Uh, there was some discussion that they needed a.
Electric car.
And I guess I'm just wondering if that's in the budget.
We actually are buying that out of Park Supplies. We're buying a used one, and we think we can buy it out of the, the year-end money that we have. We, we were renting a gas one and we're going to go to an electric that we can charge there at the community center. So we've, we've got a pretty good price on that for electric to go into our program for next year.
And then I guess the other one, you were talking about Coulon Park and the parking down there and getting new parking machine.
For the boat launch.
I mean, the boat launch, yeah. I mean, now, you know me, I'd like to charge parking at the park, so you and I are diametrically opposed on that, but I won't go into that.
All right.
A lot of people agree with you.
Uh, anyway, have we ever thought of using something like diamond parking? Is that a, is that a viable option?
We, we looked at it, but it didn't, it didn't give us the refund or the revenue that we needed for, for the amount of boaters for, within the seasonal. What we're looking is for better equipment that's, you can use either a slide card, that's better tracking of resident, non-resident. And the only way you can really monitor is that with staff on. So we have, as you know, we moved the staff from Recreation into Parks so that if it's a slow day, they're working within the park system itself at Coulon. If it's a busy day, they move over and they work in the boat launch, so we're getting a lot more work done, being able to, to use employees that way. But some of the equipment available is really not what we need in the park, so we're doing just some research on that currently.
Okay, and then my other, there was a whole page and, and when you know.
353 is, or.
Was it 353?
I don't know what you're looking for.
Well, I'm looking, no, there was, in the front of the book, we, you taught, there was a list of projects.
Uh huh.
That we're going to use for capital. Oh, here it is on page 121. Everybody knows where I'm at.
During.
This is, this is just something that is near and dear to my.
All right.
My heart is, I'm very happy to see that the 150,000 in the budget continue the expansion and replacement of the citywide security video system.
Yes.
I think that comes underneath facilities.
Yes, it does.
Uh, I just want to throw out that I'd like to see more, more in that, that line item, and I realize then that comes from somewhere else, so, and I don't have an idea, but that's just my suggestion, is see how we could beef that up a little bit, because I think security is very, very important to us. And you answered my other question. You said that we had 132,000 trees.
Hmm.
So, that, we don't take that percentage-wise, replacing the trees on Third Avenue wasn't very big.
Well, it's very visible. You know, when you have a forested area and you take a tree down, it's not as visible. When you're in a high traffic area and you're replacing trees, it certainly is very visible. And we certainly understand the sensitivity that the public feels. I hope they're understanding and we try to do the best job we can to educate them that sometimes species of trees were planted in the wrong place with the knowledge we had and coming back and making a much safer place to walk, more visibility for the storefronts is a good thing to do.
Ewan, so you've noted the page I, 121, item 12. We'd like that fleshed out. That's the security cameras the council member person just discussed. Right, Ewan? Somebody?
I got it.
Terry?
I've got it, yeah.
Okay. So look at, and what, so what that number includes and then, and then take that, so that adds to our list for future discussion.
Did you, did you just want to look at other areas to add to council member person? Is that what you're saying, or you would just like to see?
I'd just like to find another 50,000 out here.
I see.
Midair to put in there, but.
Okay.
You know, and I realize it's, it, we're playing the.
Certainly.
The, if you take, add money to this, you're going to take, it's got to come from someplace else.
Right. Well, we'll break it down exactly where those cameras are going and then what our goal is to move forward to where we want them to go each year as we add them in.
I think you're going to do too much work. I think.
No, it's all right.
We just want to see, I just want to see if we can't find some more dollars as we go through the budget, and it most likely is, that's more on Ewan's thing. I mean, and I, I guess where I'm coming on that is, if we, rather than maybe not even adding it during, right now, but say if, if revenues come in higher somewheres along the line, then we can anticipate it, you know, and I don't know if this is something we could use REIT for, but maybe next year, we could take a look at adding, adding to that. I, it's just a.
Okay. Thank you.
And I don't need to break down to where all the cameras are going and all that.
All right.
I'm not asking you to do a lot of work, I'm just.
Well, we've, we, yeah, we've prioritized, we certainly want, have the places we'd like to see, again, from our highest use areas to where we can make people feel really safe.
Well, and it most likely helps stop vandalism. I mean, it's a, it helps us a lot and I, and I, I'm just one council person and I'm, you know, I don't know if the rest of the council agrees with, if they don't agree with me, then don't do any work.
Well, if I may, yeah, no, I was just going to ask if you had some, I, I do tend to agree with you. I'm curious whether you know of some ideal spots that you'd really like to see those in particular, or if you're just thinking, say, parks and areas of high use and vandalism.
Right, I mean, I, I mean, and they're, they're working on the community center now that they're putting new cameras in. There's a lot of, we have a lot of car prowls there. Obviously, if we're going to do work down at Coulon Park, there's a, there's a lot, lot of stuff that goes on there that this new camera system that we, that the city has purchased would help. And out at the golf course and the, in the parking lots, there, I just think there's a lot of places that there are, there's criminal activity, which you don't like to talk about, obviously. And it's not horrible, I'm not trying to say that it's just, you know, epidemic or anything, but it's kind of nice to be able to catch some of these people.
And, and maybe even offset the costs with some savings from avoiding.
Right.
Vandalism losses.
Right, and that's, that's what I'm.
All right, thank you.
And Don, if I may, that, that's exactly, and what I was talking about at, at the beginning. While I'm not disagreeing with you, I need, I think for, for good deliberations, we need to know what does the $150,000 equal in enhanced service? And then what does $50,000 equal in enhanced service beyond that? And then where does that $50,000 come from? So I'm, I'm happy to entertain and I'd like to learn more about your ideas on it, but I think now that you've opened it up and thought it out, I think we all have to have the information for all of us to open it up and think it out.
And that would be, then Terry would have to, and they most likely have all this already, so it's not like.
Yeah, no, absolutely.
The last thing I wanted caused by asking some of these questions is somebody to have to do.
No, but Don, I, I think you're very fair, and I think there's potentially a lot of things that each individual council member could like. Again, we're not in a budget with, we have a whole bunch of money to spend, which I think we'd have really contentious and exciting arguments about where we would be spending if we had extra money. But I think anybody should be comfortable to do that. And yeah, it requires a little more work, but I think it's appropriate to make sure that all seven of us are on the same page.
Thanks.
Anything else for Terry?
Thank you very much for your attention, appreciate it.
Ewan, Greg, before you get up, just a second, I want to talk to Ewan. We're at 15 minutes. I cannot possibly believe, Greg, I, I love you and I know you can be brief. I'm not sure how you're going to do Public Works in 15 minutes. Could maybe we just skip to Fire?
I agree with you.
Or should we just now be considering that we're going to need another meeting? Or do we want to stop Greg mid, I just heard 15 minutes?
Well, that's, yeah, I think you process check for the council. I think Greg, no, Greg, we all know he can be brief. He cannot be that brief.
Right.
So, but on the other hand, there, Public Works is one of their big operating departments, so we want to make sure you all have the time that you need to answer the questions. The mayor mentioned that, you and I and the mayor talked about this morning. So we're totally at your disposal. I think there are a lot of issues in all the departments and you may have questions about everything. So, back to your question, I think staff is available to do a number of things as you suggested. We can either meet next week, we could set another time later in the month. The budget needs to be adopted by the first of the year, so we can take, we can stretch into November, we can take a Saturday, we can take an afternoon. We can, we will totally do whatever you'd like us to do. And as to tonight, I think you could get, we can start with Greg and I think he's prepared And as to tonight, I think you could get, we can start with Greg and I think he's prepared to start and then carry over, or, I don't know that Fire is a 15-minute presentation either. So, I think probably our recommendation would be that we can start with Public Works and we'll go until you've all had enough.
I don't have a problem with that, but just go ahead and start with Public Works for 15 minutes and we pull the plug on Greg. So, just to finish his introductory remarks in about 15, Greg, I'm sorry, you know I love you.
Now that you took three of his minutes.
We can issue him the challenge.
He's going to want to know if this time counts against him.
Yes, it's Peter's time, yeah.
I have to admit, I did a dry run on my presentation and it took 38 minutes without questions, so unless I speak like an auctioneer, we're probably not going to. But, we'll see what we can do. Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. I'm Greg Zimmerman, Renton's Public Works Administrator. And I'm pleased to provide you with an overview of the 2013-2014 Public Works budget. As Terry and Chip have mentioned, I'm very much indebted to Ewan Heine-Gwin and her talented staff to help us with the, get the numbers to where they are and organize this. And also, Joanne Witbisch is with us.
Oh, you moved.
Okay, and she was invaluable as well to help us put this budget together. So, with that, you're familiar with the organizational chart for Public Works. It's not changing. The numbers of full-time employee staff are changing a little bit. As you know, we have three divisions, Maintenance Services, which takes care of maintaining the Public Works infrastructure, the piped utilities, water, sewer wastewater, surface water, also the streets and the city's fleet. Transportation Systems, responsible for the capital improvement program for building transportation projects, transportation planning, and also for the city's municipal airport. Utility Systems is responsible for the design and the planning for the water sewer, surface water, and solid waste utilities in the city as well. The, this slide shows that our staffing level is at 139.5 FTEs totally. Right now, what that involves is a reduction of four FTEs in 2013 and then an addition of two FTEs in 2014 to bring us to that total. So, I'll get into the details in a bit. And by the way, just let me know, Mr. President, when it's time to put a halt on it and we'll certainly do that. Okay, just go quickly through some statistics. The street center line miles is 266.1. That, in 2011, that's up a couple of miles from 2010. We're not really adding streets that quickly because the economic development is a little bit slow. And also, that's annexation-driven as well. The, we have 10,440 street and traffic signs within the city of Renton. We have 4,015 streetlights. That's really about half of our streetlights. That's the one the city of Renton owns. The other half of the streetlights in the city are owned by Puget Sound Energy. So, if you double that, you'd be close to how many total streetlights there are. And we have 128 signalized intersections in Renton. That's up from 122 back in 2010, so we picked up about six intersections. The State Department of Transportation has turned over ownership and management of several intersections, signalized intersections as well. So, that's one of the reasons that number has grown.
Greg, what, what intersections did we pick up?
Let me give you a list of that. I want to make sure I get them right. So, they are state ones, so they're along the Interstate 405, but I want to make sure I get the right ones. So, I will give you a list of those. Okay. At the airport, the area in acres has not changed too much over the years. It's still 167. The concrete runway, asphalt runway is 5,382 feet long. This statistic has changed. I know those of you that are involved in the airport are always interested in how many takeoffs and landings we have. 93,406 last year is up from 80,000, a little more than 80,000 the year before. So, we had quite a bit of an upswing in takeoff and landings at the airport over the last year. Some water statistics, we have 17,300, as of 2011, these numbers are from six months old, 17,370 customers. That didn't change very much at all over the year. Wastewater, 17,412 customers, again, it didn't change over the year. Surface water, we did pick up about 412 additional customers. It's up to 22.8,000. And solid waste, we picked up about 679 customers between 2010 and 2011, so that's up to 18,250. We also list the miles of main that we have, and I'm not going to go over that into detail, or the number of fire hydrants that's there on the list. The water consumption stayed pretty stable between 2010 and 2011, about 2.5 billion gallons over the year. That didn't change much. This graphic is pretty busy and it's an important graphic. I want to spend a little bit of time on this graphic. As a matter of fact, this is maybe about as far as we get today with the presentation to talk about this one. But, it has some numbers in it that are, that are important for us to be aware of. As both Terry and Chip mentioned, the operating programs have been broken down on the top of the graphic to the six city service areas that we provide service in. Public Works specifically provides service in mobility, utilities and environment, and internal support. The current FTE count is 137.5, and the proposed operating budget, not including the capital program, is 68.7 million. As you'll notice, and as you all know, Public Works is a steward for a big, pretty big chunk of the city's budget. We have enterprise funds that we provide stewardship for. We have internal service funds and we have a piece of the general fund as well. One of the things I wanted to mention is, in a lean budget year, if you look back in the budget book, page, let me make sure I get this reference right. I'll tell you. Page 3-114, you'll see that the 2013 proposed total expenditures went up significantly, about $7.6 million over the adopted budget in 2012. That seems counterintuitive, so I thought I'd better explain that number a little bit because that one sort of pops out of the page when you look at what's happening over the years. That number includes several things that are more or less pass-through expenses that I'll talk about. In terms of the, the city service areas, 500,000 of that is in the area of mobility, 500,000 of that increase. We identified that we had been undercharging the streets and the surface water rate fund. We had used too few miles for the streets. It hadn't been updated, so we were fairly significantly undercharging the streets for the utility rates. Nonetheless, the general fund is not in a condition to suddenly take on a $500,000 hit a year, which is, would have been the difference. So, we've worked together with Ewan very resourcefully on this. There is going to be what we call a transfer of assets where the, because all of the surface water utilities were built and transferred to the utility back when the utility was formed. So, if the, we raised the amount of street rates, $500,000, there's an offsetting revenue for the, for the general fund from the utility to pay off that, for that transfer of assets. There's about $52 million of surface water assets that the general fund built before there was a surface water utility. So, it turns out to be equal for both of the funds. But, you'll see that it's a $500,000 increase in expenditures, the revenues will go up $500,000 to make it, to hold both of those funds harmless. So, that's the, that's the piece for mobility that went up. The biggest increase between 2012 and 2013 was in utilities and environment. That's about a $5.7 million increase. And much of that, $1.9 million of it, is the King County Metro wastewater rate increase. They're increasing the rate in 2013. It's a separate line on the utility bills. They're raising their wastewater treatment rate 10.2%, which comes out to about $1.29 million a year. So, we'll collect it in revenues and pass it on through to, to King County, but it appears is a big bump in our expenditures for 2013. Another big pass-through, as you all know, is the waste, the collection fee, King County's collection fee, that we call it their tipping fee for solid waste at the, at the transfer stations. That's going up 13% approximately, which is about $513,000 a year. Again, that's a pass-through. We collect it and we give it to King County. And then, we have about $1.5 million in the city utility tax increase because we're increasing the utility rates 5% across the board. And a piece of that utility rate increase also goes to the utility tax, back to the general fund. That, plus we're proposing a 0.8% additional increase on three of the utilities that we've talked about. So, altogether, the utility tax is an additional $1.5 million. That goes into the general fund, but it's collected from rates. And the, we also have a $600,000 non-city utility tax. So, if you add up these outside costs, we also have some taxes, state taxes and so forth that go up when the utility rates go up because they're set on our utility rate schedule. It results, you add them all up and it results in 5.7 million. So, it's not like we're doing a bunch of new programs. Much of this is pass-through. Greg? Yes?
I guess I, I question in your operating programs where you don't have anything in safety and the health, maybe that's because you're not deliberately spending money there. But, in Public Works, you're obviously involved in the safety and the health of our citizens. I mean, first by providing good, clean water and, and then, you know, I'm thinking of the traffic safety signals and all that. So, maybe I'm not getting the right read on Public Works not being involved in the safety and health.
I think, I think that's a fair, certainly a fair observation, Councilman. We, in trying to work up, and you might remember the discussions we had a couple of years ago when we were trying to define our city service areas, certainly departments such as Public Works have impact on all that. I think it was as much a convention of trying to identify where the primary service area was. And in that sense, certainly for transportation, the general governmental is, is mobility and then for the utilities in, utilities and environment. But, we, without getting too much off track and taking more of Greg's time, we'll be talking to you about probably having a more lengthy discussion about this very issue. How, what would be a better, more descriptive way to allocate our resources in the off-year of the budget? So, next fall, when we're not doing budget, we want to really drill down into Renton results with you.
Okay. I just, I mean, that's just an observation that...
I agree.
...a livable community also.
There was, there was somewhat of a value judgment on environment and utilities and where it should fall out, but it certainly could be divided up a little differently if you chose to look at it that way. So, I, you know, point well taken, as Jay said. Then, in the internal support, that's going up 1.5 million additional between 2012 and 2013 because the fuel tax, or the fuel costs, gasoline costs have gone way up. That's about 450,000 of it. And also, we bought some large pieces of equipment. And I think you're all aware, when you buy and add a big piece of equipment to the fleet, both, you have to pay, the department that owns it has to pay both operation and maintenance costs to maintain it, but also replacement fees. So, you divide the value of the piece of equipment over the life span of the equipment and every year, a piece of that has to be paid by the departments. So, that's actually a million dollars a year because of the vehicles that we bought over the last year. So, so if you add all of those up, plus the mid-year budget adjustments that are coming through in 2012, that explains the $7 million jump, which looks very large. I thought that it needed some explanation before we got into some of the other issues. The jump between 2013 and 2014 is not nearly as pronounced. It's about a 1%, about $873,000. So, it's, it's more of a, more of an expected level increase than the increase between 2012 and 2013. If you go down to the capital programs, we're having absolutely a banner year. We're building in 2013, $46 million of capital projects. $10 million of that is utilities and 35, 36 million of it is our ongoing major transportation projects. As you know, the Southwest 27th Strander Project's going to be going full bore all in 2013 and so is Rainier. And they will both be completed in the early months of 2014. You'll see 2014, the capital improvement budget goes way down because we'll be back to designing things. And for, I think you're all aware of this also, for Public Works, our capital improvement budget is not so linked to the economy and the state of the economy as it is with general fund because most of this is paid for through grant acquisition or utility rates and it's not subject to the same fluctuation. So, what makes it a very busy, expensive year is that we managed to acquire a bunch of grants and did, are we in the construction phase as opposed to the design phase? Because the construction phase is very expensive and that's what's happening in 2013. On the budget highlights, if you go down to the sheet there, we will be hiring four additional FTE, or actually, we're reducing four FTEs in 2013. They're all open positions. Two of them are in the Transportation Division and two of them are in the surface water section of utilities. I'll talk about them in a little bit, but they're all vacant positions right now. Then, in 2013, we're going to be adding two positions to maintenance because we're going to increase our staffing for taking over, the second increase of the staff, for taking over maintenance of the subdivision surface water facilities. That'll be part two of ramping that up.
Greg, let's, let's go ahead and stop you on the budget highlights, especially since you said that first one's linked to further discussion
Okay.
later in there. So, let's just go ahead and call you good for tonight.
Sure.
With that, are we, and Ewan and Jay can go in, but it's more checking with the council. We, basically, the issue before us is, do we need a meeting Monday? Because we'll need to call that out at the council meeting and that would be the one to do. We, as a council, believe that we can continue on schedule. Obviously, we can set meetings later and further. The next meeting would be the 5th. We can, we still have time, basically, you know, theoretically up to the end of the year, but we could add more meetings then as we needed it, just the feel of the council if we felt we needed one next week on our day off.
Can I just make a, a comment? I don't know that it needs to be next week necessarily, but I look at the list of items that are scheduled for November 5th with the fire and police and court and attorney and legislative executive and human resources. I think that's a little overambitious, seeing how we've gone today, so, it's my comment.
And it's a valid comment. So, it's just a matter of, do we think that we need a preemptive meeting as in having one next week or that we still have enough time built into the schedule that as we, most likely since we now bumped one, we'll be bumping, that we'd have a meeting, more meetings after the 5th?
We have a public hearing also on the 5th, so it's likely at the rate where we're going that we would not have heard all the departments before we start hearing from the public. I don't know if that makes a difference. That's already been set, though. Pardon?
How do you, Ewan, Jay, how do you feel about the fact that the presentations haven't been done and a public hearing is scheduled?
Well, I, I think it's probably, I think the question that Councilwoman Palmer just asked is probably how you all feel. Certainly, the whole idea is to get information and so the council can hear the information. I, I totally understand that it, to the extent that you get some specific comments from the public on information, you haven't yet had a direct briefing from us on that might be a little, a little awkward, certainly not what we've done before. So, if the, we don't want to impose on your, on your day off. If, but on the other hand, to get on, to stay ahead of the game, we, staff certainly willing to come in. We could, we could schedule a three-hour time slot next week and then, and then for sure get through most of the presentations and then have just the remaining to finish up on the 5th and then begin to get the questions that the council might have. We, holiday on the 12th, so we would then have the 19th to continue the deliberations.
So, Mr. President?
Terry?
I'd like to move that we have a three-hour meeting next week and that we cover at least, try and cover the first four or first three. I don't, I think...
Next week on our day off, we would need three hours in additional to the rest of the schedule.
It's, no, we, we could just take two hours, you could take three. It sort of is up to you all, I think, how much, if it's easier to take it in a, in a three-hour chunk or just do two hours.
Yeah, I would, I would probably like to try and keep it maybe to two hours if we have one. Just, I think there's a limit to how much information I can digest in a certain amount of time. And furthermore, I guess I, I want to keep the presentations moving along at a pretty good clip, so I think, I think we'll fill whatever time we allot, but...
So, I'm hearing we're having a meeting next week.
Yeah.
I don't think there's any other way to get through it all in the timeframe that's been set out.
You know... Just in a timing, is, you know, we're, we're, we're talking about a lot of money. And I think it's important that we have the time to ask the questions tonight. Tonight, I thought was one of the fastest... Tonight, I thought was one of the faster budget presentations that we've had. The staff is providing excellent information and excellent answers, but it's gonna take, it just takes the time that it takes to do it. So, if we want to meet for two hours next week, there's, there's no way, I'll, I'll predict that Greg has a good hour left by the time we... I mean, it's a, you, it's a gigantic budget, and I...
Yeah, no, I, I agree, so, and we still got two hours on the 5th now, so...
There'll be other questions.
Let's just shoot for next Monday, starting at 5:00.
Is that okay, Randy?
Yeah, that's fine. And, I mean, I don't want to, I don't want to short this.
I'd be with two hours.
Okay, yeah, two hours.
I do too, so let's shoot for 5:00 o'clock, and then, I mean, obviously, we don't have to announce an end time.
Yeah.
But, the goal is for tomorrow, or next Monday at 5:00 for two hours.
We probably won't have to stop anybody in the middle of the presentation next week.
Exactly. Because we won't have another meeting betting up against us.
But just to clarify for the public, this is just a committee of the hall, we still will not be having a council meeting.
Right, and we'll announce all that during the council debate.
Right.
Terry?
I'm just wondering about questions that we might have already had, would it be better to prepare them and send them to staff now in anticipation, or would you prefer that we do it as they come up in their presentations? You know?
As I go through the budget, if I have questions, I'll give them to the administration. A lot of this comes, my questions come out...
We're thinking...
I mean, yeah, any question that you direct under our policy is the answers come back to all of us, so...
Right.
However you feel makes the most sense to you to ask it, knowing that we're all gonna get the answer to it.
Okay.
With that, committee of the hall is adjourned.
We were going to address the question I made.
Yeah, we're, at the beginning of the meeting is 6:00, we set that over to November 5th in regional issues.
Oh.
With that, committee of the hall is adjourned.
Thank you.
Sparky.org. Sparky the Fire Dog here. Make sure your home has smoke alarms in every bedroom, outside your sleeping areas, and on every level of your home, even your basement.
And replace the batteries every year.
For games and activities, go to sparky.org.